City Council Workshop Meeting to Order. Deputy City Recorder Patton, please take role. Uh, we're gonna have the same audio issue that we're having with Mr. Nullup, I think, Caroline, with you. Uh, I couldn't barely even make that out.
I couldn't either.
Mayor Snyder?
I'm here. Why don't, uh, why don't I call role and you can, uh, you can record it, because otherwise I don't know that we're gonna make it through it. So, um, Youth Counselor Calderon?
Here.
Counselor Anderson?
Here.
Counselor Newton?
Here.
Counselor Lube?
Here.
Council President Goodhouse?
Here.
And Mayor Snyder is here as well. Alright, let's, uh, move to the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Nullup, please display the flag and everybody mute yourselves. Okay. Thank you. Let's move on to, uh, Call for any non-agenda items. City Manager Wine, any non-agenda items, or Council?
Mr. Mayor, staff have no non-agenda items tonight.
Okay. We'll move on to the second item on the agenda, which is to receive a progress update on the Matrix Performance Audit.
Great. Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Nicole Hendricks and I'm the Senior Management Analyst uh, in the City Manager's Office here at Tigard. I'm gonna share my screen so that you can see my PowerPoint presentation. Okay, it should be sharing now. Let me know if it isn't. Um, so, I'm here tonight to provide an update on our Matrix Performance Audit and the progress in implementing those recommendations and measures that were identified um, back in 2019. And before I do that, I just want to provide a brief history of how we got here uh, today. So, back in 2019, or 2017, we received input from some community members with concern about how and if the city is spending and operating its services efficiently and effectively. And in response to that, in June of 2018, the council requested an audit of City General Fund Services. And then from July through December, we staff went through a procurement process which led up to January of 2019, and we hired Matrix Consulting Group to conduct the audit. Their work included staff interviews and research that resulted in a final audit report that was presented to council in October of 2019. Um, and that audit produced sixty-nine recommendations which identified opportunities for operational improvements and fifty-eight performance measures to expand our data-informed decision-making. So, after that final audit was presented, staff then developed an implementation plan. And that plan expanded upon the audit results by incorporating timeframes for completion based on our department capacities, uh, budget estimates to implement, city-defined priority levels ranging from immediate to low, and supporting narratives that, and combined with the audit, established a baseline and helped us prioritize our next steps. So, that implementation plan was presented to you in December of 2019. And for a quick reference, both the final audit and the implementation plan are included in tonight's council packet. Um, and then at the beginning of this year, we started working on setting up a accountability and reporting method um, through a tool called Microsoft Office Planner, which we have, already had access to, so it's been really helpful in allowing us to track our progress and of the recommendations and the measures. And that brings us to today, where I'm gonna provide an update on how we're doing with both the recommendations and the measures. And I'll start with the status of the recommendations from the audit. So, as I mentioned earlier, there were sixty-nine of them, and happy to report that thirty-four percent of all recommendations have been completed to date. And that includes all the recommendations that we intended to complete in 2019, so those were all on time. And also some in 2020, and beyond that, we have completed some in 2021 and later. Um, and also note that all the recommendations that were given an immediate priority level were completed in 2019. Um, so, that's, that's good news that we're on track um, and completing the high priority ones. So, you may recognize the bar graph on the right that was provided in the implementation plan, um, and it shows the percentage of total recommendations that we expected to complete each year. And I went ahead and updated that chart. Um, you should see it now, so that you'll still see the percent complete for each year, but now you're gonna see also the, um, percent that's, that we're, um, like our progress for each year. So, the progress within each year. So, for 2019, um, you'll see that all twelve percent of the recommendations were completed. And for 2020, uh, most, the majority of them are either complete or in progress, um, in the green or blue. And then we have a couple recommendations, there are four, which accounts for, I think, two percent actually, um, that are gonna be moved to 2021. The main reason, reason for that delay is because, uh, we had some operational changes and our focus kinda went towards COVID response. Um, and so, it kind of took away time spent on implementing the recommendations. And then the other thing is some of the recommendations rely on completing other things first, like our strategic plan, which you'll hear about, um, this month. That's exciting. Um, so, if, um, you want more detail about, like, those delays or what specific, uh, recommendations and their status, that's available in the status report that's attached in the council packet. Um, and then, yeah, we're making, we're continuing to make progress, so we expect to complete another fourteen percent of recommendations by the end of this year, and that's keeping us on track and, and moving. So, that's, that's the overview of the recommendations. Um, and then, moving along to our measures. So, we had fifty-eight performance measures. And our approach to implementing these is a little bit more in-depth than the recommendations, because the recommendations really focus on yes, no, has the operational change occurred? Um, and the measures are more multifaceted. So, you'll see in the visual below, it's a multi-step process for achieving the end goal of data-informed decision-making, um, and making adjustments if we need to. So, the first step, uh, which is to identify, a lot of what Matrix, um, did was this first portion, is helping us figure out what we wanna solve for. And I would say too, that in this step, a lot of departments are still kinda refining some of the Matrix measures, so that it better fits the goals of the department. Um, so I would say about, like, fourteen percent of the measures are still in this kind of refinement of, in step one. And then we have step, ooh, it says my video isn't working. Everyone still hear me?
Your, your audio has been crystal clear the whole time, but you are frozen.
Okay, well, oh, well, that's okay, as long as you can hear me, so thank you. Um, so, step two is to collect information, so, and that includes establishing systems and tools to track, and the majority of our measures are in this step. Um, and that's because many of the measures are kinda reliant on our new enterprise system, um, and we'll be working with IT and Tyler to ensure that the data that we want to collect, we're able to collect and we know how to report out on it with the new systems. So, a lot of the measures are in this step two. And then for step three, to analyze, which is monitoring and pulling data and doing that quality control. Uh, right now, we're aiming for a full year's worth of data, so tracking for a full year so that we can see trends, um, and obviously, we wanna see trends over years too, so continuing to, um, to analyze and, and report that. Um, and step four is to report, so creating a process for sharing performance, and that's both internally and externally, for, for staff, for leadership team, and then for the community, so they know how, how we're doing, how we're efficient, um, where we can improve, uh, and that kinda thing. And that's can be manifested in, like, the citywide report card that we do each year, and we're improving each year. So, uh, that's, that's three and four, steps three and four, and seventeen percent of our measures are kinda in these two buckets. And then our end goals, which are steps five and six, is to make data-informed decisions, being informed, and then actually turning that into action, turn that insight into action and make adjustments if we need to, and um, that, that's the end goal that we're working towards, but we're not quite there. As you can see, there's, it's a multi-step process, uh, and multi-year process to get to that point, but we are making progress, which is a good thing. And then, to help move these things along, we also wanna start aligning our work through the strategic plan, because we have metrics in the strategic plan, um, department work plans, the budget, council goals. Right now, between all those platforms, we have, I think it's like over a hundred and sixty different measures. And so, we've done a lot in that step one to identify, like, what measures do we need and how do we, how do we solve? But now we need to kinda bring it in and refine and align and move those into higher steps so that we can actually make data-informed decisions and then report out on them and break them down so they're manageable. So, just as with the recommendations, if you wanna see more detail about each measure, um, that is also in the status report that is provided in the council packet. And then, just looking ahead, so for the recommendations, we're gonna continue to implement. Um, we're gonna start doing quarterly check-ins with the departments to make sure that they're on track and if they need help, or how we can adjust to make sure we're, we're continuing progress, and then things like this, like progress reports, updates, so that everyone's informed. And then with the measures, um, like I said earlier, looking at that bigger picture and aligning those measures across all the different initiatives so that we can kinda scale it in and focus and get to those steps five and six. And then, as systems become available with Tyler, moving from those steps two and three and, and onward. So, that is my presentation, and if you have any questions or suggestions about anything you heard, um, feel free to ask. Thanks.
Alright, thank you, Nicole. That was very thorough and it gives us a good idea of, of where things are at. And I would just remind the public that if they, uh, want to look at the detail, all that information and additional, much more additional detail is available in the uh, meeting packet for tonight's meeting and this item, under this item. Um, so I would encourage people that are curious about that to, to take a look. So, um, Counselor Anderson, any questions or comments? Youth Counselor Calderon?
Uh, no questions.
Counselor Lube?
No, I, I just wanted to say thank you for the, the status report in the meeting packet. That was really helpful just to detail everything out and answered any questions I had.
Counselor Newton?
Yeah, I, the report was really helpful, um, giving a picture of where we are now. It was really great, and I think looking forward to 2021, um, I, I think you hit a good point. Um, Ms. Hendricks, when you talked about aligning across all our initiatives, it'll be helpful as we, um, have our budget uh, discussion on October third and we move into the budget process to be mindful of these, um, items that we're looking at for 2021 to see, you know, the, how they fit in to other initiatives. So, I appreciate this. It was really well laid out and, um, helpful. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Council President Goodhouse?
Uh, no questions. Thank you for the thorough report.
Alright, uh, Nicole, was there anything else that you or City Manager Wine, were you, I think you've achieved what you wanted to, which was to give us a progress update, but I just wanna double-check there's no other pieces of information you all need?
No, that's it.
Thank you very much. Excellent work and excellent progress. I know, you know, this is a report out that represents the work of literally hundreds of people um, and improvement broadly in the entire city to implement the changes. So, I wanna recognize that and thank you all for, um, and everybody that's not here tonight, I would, I would hope that they all get um, a combined kudos from the entire council about how much we and our community appreciate this important work.
Thank you.
Okay. We will, uh, move on to item number three, which is to receive an update on the Tigard Aid Program. Director LaFrance?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Togo LaFrance, Finance and Information Services Director. Um, tonight, I'm excited to bring to you an update on the Tigard Aid Program, which is our utility billing assistance program uh, for the utility billing customers of the city of Tigard, as well as those customers that we serve in, uh, King City, City of Durham, and the Bull Mountain area. Um, while I'm the one that's getting to present tonight, this has been a multi-departmental effort um, to bringing in staff from Public Works, including Director Rager, John Goodrich, our utility supervisor, um, Joe Barrett, and Samantha Rico from Public Works Finance, Marissa Grass from the Public Works Communications Group, Kent Wyatt from our citywide communications group, uh, Mai Kwa, our utility billing supervisor, um, Nicole Hendricks, who you just heard from, who helped represent city management, helped us coordinating with our partners, and Shelby Rahala, our city attorney, um, who helped us drafting the resolution um, that we're, um, bringing before you this evening for discussion purposes. So, um, I'm gonna share my screen. And hopefully this is now visible. Um, and so what we're asking for tonight is we're looking for some direction from council, uh, for a resolution that we have scheduled to go before you next week. So, uh, what we wanna do is take our existing program in utility billing um, that is intended to help our utility billing customers that are being impacted by COVID. And, uh, several of those changes require council action, since the original program was set up um, through a resolution that council passed back in May. Uh, what we wanna be able to do, to sort of summarize what that resolution would do, is it would allow us to align our program with the Washington County Carers Program, um, which means that we'd be covering the entire residential bill. Um, we would be able, we also want to make a change so that we can um, cover underemployed as well as the unemployed. Uh, we want to be able to, um, help out our commercial customers that are impacted by COVID, um, up to five hundred dollars per month. Uh, for those customers that have been eligible and qualified previously, we want to retroactively provide them with the enhanced benefits of the improved program. And, um, our, part of our current program, uh, was put into the emergency declarations that council has been passing. Um, this resolution, uh, would make it effective through the end of the year and bring all of the aspects into a single, of this program into a single resolution. So, in short, why are we wanting to make some changes to the existing program? Um, our existing program is, is underutilized. And we want to, um, increase the participation. This program was set up to help, um, our residential customers and our commercial customers that are being impacted by a worldwide pandemic, um, whose, whose livelihood has been threatened by that pandemic. And council took action early on to provide them with assistance, uh, through, uh, relief in the utility bill. Uh, what we also want to be able to do is, um, while our program has been happening, Washington County has a carers program, um, that they have implemented. Uh, and what we wanna be able to do is align our program with the benefits that are in the Washington County Carers Program. So, a little bit of a summary. Um, what we are, what happened is on May twelfth of this year, council passed a resolution that approved monthly utility credit of up to forty dollars per month for our residential utility customers. Uh, and that was given to any customer who was impacted and made unemployed due to the COVID pandemic. It also took and, um, provided a similar benefit to our commercial customers that had been impacted by COVID. And between the two customer classes, um, the total aid for, um, for our customers set aside to benefit our customers is three-quarters of a million dollars. In total, through all the actions that council took, uh, we were able to provide two-point-two million dollars in customers' assistance. So, that's made up of four components. The first two I just mentioned, which was six-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand for our unemployed households and a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand for our businesses that were impacted. In addition, the city has a longstanding program through St. Vincent de Paul that, um, help, that helps customers, um, that meet certain income qualifications. So, basically, our low-income customers. Uh, we were expanded that program, uh, removed some of the restrictions on that program, and so there was an additional fifty thousand dollars, um, that we were, that we did there to expand that program. And then lastly, all customers benefited through a delay in rate increases. We had rate increases that were scheduled for July first. We've delayed them to January first, and, um, and that has helped out our community to tune of one-point-four million dollars. So, in developing our original and our, our current program, we took a look at, um, some expectations. We were entering the pandemic, we were starting to see the economic impacts of the, of a worldwide pandemic here in the city of Tigard, um, and in the state of Oregon and Washington County. And we were anticipating roughly a ten percent unemployment rate. And what we did is we looked at the utility bill, um, saw that we had a base rate, um, of, of, in our residential customers of about forty-three dollars and change. And what we did is we rounded that to forty dollars and looked to see what, what we could essentially afford as, as a city and what we expected to see as the need. And if we took forty-dollar credit and we looked at a ten percent unemployment rate, uh, we anticipated that would, that would equal ten percent of our residential customers. Um, and we looked, look, looking at what we could afford to do, we could afford to offer a forty-dollar credit for ten percent of our residential customers. And to give you some sense of scale, we have about sixteen thousand residential, single-family residential customers. So, if we had ten percent of those customers unemployed, that would be sixteen hundred households a month that we would be helping out to the tune of forty dollars per month. And we would be able to keep that on, near or slightly under the six-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars that we had, um, that we had allocated towards that. So, that's kinda how we sized the, the, the benefit in our current program. Um, as we mentioned, that's been underutilized, and we're gonna get into that in just a moment. Um, what we want to do is we want to, um, increase the use of our program. So, part of what we would like to do is we are recommending that we expand our program, um, so that it pays off the whole bill, not just the forty dollars. And this would align what Tigard provides to underemployed and unemployed customers, to the Washington County Carers Program, which, um, benefits households that have been impacted by COVID and meet certain income requirements. So, it's similar to our St. Vincent de Paul program. So, what we wanna do is we wanna make sure that we've got a safety net for customers that, um, don't qualify for the, for the Washington County Carers Program and that they receive a benefit that is equal to the Washington County Carers Program. Additionally, for our commercial customers, um, you know, we looked at it and we have some commercial customers that may have been impacted by COVID that have substantial, um, that have substantial utility bills. And if we were to pay their entire bill like we are with residential customers, we would, we're concerned that we would quickly use up the hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars, but that's been set aside for that. And, um, looking at our commercial customers, five hundred dollars is, is about a, is roughly a median, um, bill for our commercial customers. And so, um, so we figure that we can help roughly half of our commercial customers get a full benefit. And for those larger commercial customers that are being impacted by COVID, um, they would still be eligible for a credit up to five hundred dollars. So, when I say that we've been, um, underutilized as a program, if we were to, I was mentioning earlier, we have about sixteen thousand residential customers. We were anticipating a ten percent unemployment rate, which would give us sixteen hundred applications per month. Um, so, to date, from mid-May through mid-September, um, our total residential applications has only been three-hundred-and-one. That's across a hundred-and-forty-eight residential customers. So, several customers have had multiple, um, months' worth of benefit. Um, and only twenty-eight commercial, um, applications across fourteen customers. So, uh, while we've set aside seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, um, only a little over, a little under thirteen thousand dollars has been used to this point. So, why do, why has it been so underutilized? Uh, anecdotally, from talking from those customers that have been utilizing the program or those customers that we try to refer to the program, um, one of the things we've been hearing is forty dollars simply isn't enough. It's not enough to incentivize a customer to go through the application process to get the, the benefit of the program. Um, additionally, it's taken time for customers to learn about this program. Um, and we're gonna talk about the outreach related to the program in just a moment. And, um, additionally, from a statistically, uh, we've reached that, that roughly ten percent unemployment rate that we expected. However, unemployment has not been distributed uniformly across, um, all household types and income types. So, gen, in general, unemployment during the pandemic has hit harder at lower-income jobs. So, the customer service positions, healthcare positions, um, that have, uh, generally are lower-paying. And those are the, the residents in Tigard that are more likely or less likely to have a single-family home and be able to ask for one of the, these credits. Additionally, one of the things we have seen that we didn't anticipate is underemployment. So, there's a lot of, of customers that have had their hours cut. And our program, as currently constituted, you have to be unemployed to qualify. Um, so, how did we roll out the program? Uh, I mentioned that it's taken a while for, for customers to learn about the program. Uh, we used the full, um, breadth of Tigard's online tools, from the website to social media to emails. Uh, we also did personal referrals, so any customer that called in looking for help on the utility bill, our utility billing staff made personal referrals to, um, to, to this program. And we also had a number of hard copy tools. So, every single customer in the city of Tigard that rees, or actually, every single customer that's served by the city of Tigard, um, received a hard copy at least three times. So, in both the May and the June utility bills, there was a staffer in there. We also have our No H2O newsletter that goes out to all of our customers, so we had three opportunities for customers to learn about this program. Uh, we also provided our materials, um, in both, yeah, English and Spanish. Additionally, we did some outreach with some of our nonprofit groups, um, to try and get those targeted customers who may need the help most. So, um, moving forward, what we'll do to continue the program and increase participation? Um, so, the Tigard Aid Residential Utility Billing Relief Program, um, is being implemented alongside the County, Washington County Carers Program. So, I mentioned Washington County Carers is there if you've been impacted by COVID and you meet certain income requirements. Uh, what Tigard's program's going to do is, in addition to that, if you've been impacted by COVID and if you don't meet the income requirements of Washington County's program, we can still provide help. Uh, we want to increase the credit so that it will incentivize more customers to take advantage of, of this aid that the city has set aside for them. And we're gonna do some additional outreach efforts. So, um, we're gonna continue with things like the No H2O, um, using our, our social media, continue to do referrals. But in, in addition to that, we now have after a few months, some, some data about, um, who needs the help. So, we're gonna start making personal phone calls to all of our customers that are past due. We're going to, um, include program information with our final notice bills, so again, those customers that need the help the most. And lastly, we're gonna go door-to-door. We're gonna do door hangers for our customers that are on our final notice list, um, and make sure that they know about this program. So, um, you know, we're at the, the end of my presentation. Again, what, uh, we're doing is we're seeking direction on the program changes. Um, some of those changes require your action next week and a resolution, and that resolution is attached to your AIS, and so- And so any questions that you have or any direction you'd like to provide or changes to that resolution you think would be necessary? Not only am I here to answer those questions, but in the beginning, I introduced a whole bunch of staff that have been working on this program, and most of them are here this evening also. So thank you very much for the time to talk about these improvements and any questions that council has.
So Toby, thank you. And Council President Goodhouse, before you, before you start, I, I just want to pose an additional question, I guess, a broad policy question that I'd like the rest of the council to react to as well, in addition to the presentation. And that is that I'm, I'm pretty troubled by the fact that as I think about it more, we're not getting aid to the people who need it, in part because they all are, you know, folks that live in apartments or other places where they're not directly paying the utility bill, but believe me, they end up paying the utility bill. And I, I lived in an apartment like that when I first moved to Tigard, where I got a subbill from a separate entity that took the city bill and broke it up into component parts. And I guess I don't think that those folks are any less needy of support than others. And Toby, when I listen to what you describe and the barrier, it seems to me like we need to figure out how to deal with that. And I don't know, I don't know how exactly. I've got some ideas, but I guess for the council, as you're asking your questions and providing your input, maybe include your thoughts about whether we need to try to figure out how to deal with that issue to get help to the people that need it the most, as you're pointing out. So, Council President Goodhouse, you had your hand up first, I'll let you go.
And I, I'm glad you mentioned that, Mayor, because I, I can attest to that as well. The apartments, my, my son just moved back to Tigard, and he's in apartment, and the apartment complex he's at, they do that, they take the water bill, but they have some kind of a meter that they do where I think they put it onto the rent each month, but it doesn't directly come from the city. So that's a good point where if the, if the residents, they're in apartments, and there could be a large number of those. So I would like the, I agree with you as well, like to have the staff take a look at that and see if there's a way that we can take into account that, and people might be affected that way, where they can't qualify for this because the apartment complex, which might be huge, is paying that. But how do they get assistance in that way? But that wasn't my question. My one question, uh, two questions. The first one on the, on the commercial for the businesses for the five hundred, would that go into effect once we passed it? Or I know a lot of businesses are back, are, are in arrears by three or six months. Would that go? I have an echo for some reason when I'm talking. It's bugging me. Would that go into arrears, or would that just start from the point we passed it? How would that work? Because a lot of businesses out there are behind, and I have a second question after that.
Sure. Quickly, what I can say is the plan right now is that anybody who applies and qualifies and found, finds that they are in arrears, we would take care of the, the prior months as well.
Okay. And, and this one might not matter as much. I was just wondering, with the, the water bills, is that, that's going to go into arrears as well? Does that take into account, though? I mean, I guess we put the parameters on there if people are lower income or need assistance for the parameters, but I'm just wondering if someone had, that has a pool or maybe has, you know, watering property that we, if we take that into account, if there's going to be a larger water bill that may be for extra resources or if that'd be so, such a small percentage that we just overlook that and still pay the entire water bill or utility bill?
So it's, it's, it's not their ability to qualify is not based upon how much water they used. It's, it's whether or not they've been impacted by COVID. So, so if we have a single-family household that does have a garden or, or something along those lines where they use a lot of water, suddenly they found that they're unemployed, or that suddenly their hours have changed and now they're underemployed, we'd be able to help them with that larger bill. And so that's something that we can still help out those customers.
Okay, and would this go through the, the time that we have as far as the state emergency for the city? Or what time, timeframe do we see this going through?
So what we, this will go, the resolution, the example resolution would be through the end of the calendar year. And what, what we're doing with this resolution, with the help of the city attorney, we've designed it so that we'll remove actions related to utility bill out of your emergency declarations, and it's now being put into this resolution.
It's decoupling them.
Thank you.
You bet.
Councilor Newton?
Okay, thank you. Hey, thank you for taking the initiative on this, Mr. LaFrance and all the staff that helped you with this. That's great. I, I like to see this. The timing of the end of the year, is that because you think that's when the funds will run out? I was just curious as to the, the date. Doesn't matter that much, but I was just curious as to why the end of the year.
When we originally looked at the program back in May, we were looking at a program that would take us through the end of the calendar year. We can certainly, if, if council so desires, we can certainly in December come to you with a check-in and see if we want to continue that. We would have a couple of decision points there, some related to the program. But also at the first of the year is when our delayed rate increases have our schedule to start.
Okay, okay, great, that's helpful. And I, you know, as somebody who lived in apartments a lot of my adult life, I agree that, you know, there can be problems with, you know, rents going up, you're not sure what they're tied to. So it, it, it intrigues me as well to look at a way to try to find some way to assist those folks. I don't know what that looks like, and I don't know nowadays how that, how those costs are passed on. But, but I think it might be, I know there's probably a lot of people out there that are renting that don't get direct utility bills that could probably use some help. So I, I would be interested in seeing what we might be able to do in that regard. But thanks for the, the work on this and taking the initiative.
Councilor Lube?
Yeah, thank you. I believe since my house actually qualifies and it would be a direct benefit, that I have to abstain from conversations and voting on this topic. But I just want to say thank you for the additional thought and, and pushing to get it out to residents.
So I, I'm not, I, I want to ask the city attorney if that's accurate. We've had these debates back and forth on whether something applies to everyone or a smaller group of people. So I've been told in the past, utility stuff is not subject to that. But City Attorney Rahala, is, is this a conflict for Councilor Lube because of the smaller nature of the group?
That's exactly it, yes. We did check with the Oregon Government Ethics Commission, and it is.
Yeah, we asked.
Youth Councilor Calderon?
Uh, yeah, I just had a question, and this is just rooted in the fact that I don't pay bills. But how much is an average utility bill in Tigard?
Okay, I, actually, I don't have that in front of me. I think if you, if you would ask me that in May, I had like, top of, top of head. I can tell you that it, it, it's not uncommon for it to be somewhere around two hundred dollars. And so that would pay for somebody's water, pays for the, the price of taking the dirty water away from the hu, home, making sure that, making sure that the water you have is, is safe to drink, making sure that the water that goes away is safe to put back in the environment. We also have stormwater that helps take care of the, the water that comes down to make sure it gets collected in the city's streets or from somebody's rooftop, make sure that that's also being treated properly. And in addition, Tigard also has a street maintenance fee that helps pay to make sure that streets that are already in, in okay condition stay in pretty good condition in the city of Tigard. And lastly, the, there's the parks and recreation fees that, that helps fund a significant portion of the city of Tigard's parks, maintenance, and recreation program.
Yeah, great. I was just also blown away by the fact that only thirteen thousand dollars have been used out of the entire budget. So I think it would be important to make sure that all of that money's being used properly. And that being said, I would also be interested in seeing on how we can help people who are in apartment complexes and don't directly pay water bills because they're, they're probably the people that need the help the most.
Thank you. Councilor Anderson?
Well, good job, Toby and team. I think the resolution, you know, as it reads, is great. I wouldn't change anything, but that's, that's just me, I'm not a huge wordsmither, but you know, I like the fact that we're leveraging money from the county, so that's, that's great. As far as the, as far as the, the tenants, you know, a lot of the big complexes have property management firms. And, you know, I think they would like to pass on some of these savings to their guys. They don't really care as long as they get refunded the amount. They probably don't have the staff to separate the qualified residents, though. So that might entail some more staff from the city to help them out. But again, some of these really big places, of course, they have these property management companies in there. They probably represent many units in Tigard, different ones. So I guess that would be a place to start.
So the other, the other policy issue that this raises as well is the, the folks that are, that receive water, that live in Tigard but are not in the Tigard Water Service Area. And it seemed, I mean, I guess, Mr. LaFrance, when I'm thinking about this as an all-Tigard type of thing, I think our objective as a city is to be helping our residents. And whether they get a direct bill from us or not is kind of almost, it's not totally irrelevant, but it's kind of a secondary consideration from my perspective. We should be trying to figure out how to help the most needy people. And if they happen to be Tigard residents who get water from the Twelton Valley Water District, I think we should be figuring out how to help them too with their utility bills. I know that presents more complexity, but the idea here is to help Tigard residents, not just certain Tigard residents who own single-family dwellings and, you know, you know, get their own water bill and, and all those kinds of things. So, and, and get water from us as opposed to the, the Twelton Valley Water District. So I, I, I guess I'm just asking, you know, what are your thoughts based on what's been said about? And I've got some ideas we could talk about, you know, after the meeting or another day about how to at least work on the apartment stuff or even on, on this. But it seems like our intent should be broader at this point to get the money spent, but to help the people that need it the most.
So, so yes, that's, that, I mean, that's the whole intent of what you're seeing in front of you this evening. We're trying to get, hit a broader audience and provide them with, by including, doing things like including underemployed and provide them with more help. So a larger dollar credit being provided. On, on those Tigard residents that don't receive Tigard water, they are still billed by the city of Tigard for sewer, stormwater, parks, streets. And, and so they would be eligible to have that entire bill, you know, taken care of, and through, through this program. And, and if they qualify under the Washington County Cares Program, which has an income qualification, they can also get the water portion paid. So, so yes, basically, the, the hole there would be somebody who receives water from the Twelton Valley Water District, receives their water bill from them, does not qualify for, for the Washington County program, and to find out if there's a way that we could potentially help them and with the water portion, if they've been impacted and they're underemployed or unemployed because of COVID. So yes, it's something we can look into, see if they're, you know, contact Twelton Valley Water District, see if there's something we can do to help identify those customers. And, and I'll tell you, City Tigard is not the only one that's wrestling with the, the apartment renter problem. It is, it's a problem that we've been starting to look at. It's, it's difficult because there's no guarantee that if we lower the rent or through the utility bill on a apartment complex, that that is going to result in lower rents for the people that are occupying that apartment complex. So, so it, it, it's, it's, it's a struggle. And so there might be something we can do where we talk to the apartment complexes, see if they're willing to pass on a credit to the rent if we pass on a credit to them on the utility bill.
Why not, why not just have them show up with their sub-meter bill and, and provide them the credit that way? I mean, I, I'm not interested in making landlords, you know, make more money here. But people, people that get a sub-metered bill at an apartment complex, I would think they, they should be able to bring that in. Council President Goodhouse, I know you've been wanting to speak, go ahead.
I was gonna, I was gonna, I just had a thought. I mean, if we took the, the model from the commercial, and you're, you're stating that we would only want to do the water bill for them because it might be huge, why not maybe rather trying to figure out where the money goes with apartments and, and the meter bill or not? Why not just come up if an apartment dwelling tenant is affected by it, we do a flat amount of a fifty or a hundred or figure out some kind of an amount or percentage of the rent and just give it to them? Because whether they have a meter bill or they're paying rent, one way or the other, they're paying the water bill. So maybe just come up with a arbitrary amount that they get that goes towards their rent. Because either way, they're paying for it. If they're paying a thousand dollars a month, but they don't get a meter bill, the apartment is still factoring in that water usage into their, their rent. So maybe to say that apartment dwelling person, based off their rent, they get a five percent or ten percent, or they get a flat hundred dollars. And the other thing I was just going to state, the one thing I heard that maybe why some of these, we haven't got such involvement, and maybe this will be a, a bigger amount for people to do it. But sometimes the, which required or the forms of the process sometimes may be too encumbering for someone to apply for it. So if the easier we can make it for these processes, I think we'll see more people. Of course, we'll make sure that people are, are, are meeting the requirements, but the easier we can make these processes, I think we'll see more people apply for it. Because that's why I've heard, when I've talked to people about what we have, what we're offering, it seems like it's a lengthy process, or they might have to gather things or prove stuff. So the easier we can make it, but maybe with a higher amount, they'll, they'll attract more people to apply for it as well.
I'm fine with Council President Goodhouse's suggestion that we just figure out on a, a per, per apartment thing. And I think you could figure out what that should be pretty easily by taking some of the larger apartment complexes, looking at the total bills and dividing them by the number of units, and then, you know, establishing a credit that's somewhere around, you know, I, I would guess the number's going to be somewhere around forty to sixty dollars a month for all utilities, or the, with the whole utility bill. But that's just a, kind of a wild guess.
Absolutely, we'll look into doing that. And one, one thing I have been, provided a correction. I think earlier I said that a Tigard bill could reach up to two hundred dollars for a single-family home. I've been told that the average bill is more like a hundred and twenty-five.
I was gonna, I was gonna say something similar, but I decided not to. But yes, Emilio, the, it would be a lot of water usage to be at two hundred dollars. But some people will have two hundred dollar bills, but it's much more common between a hundred and a hundred and fifty. Council, do we have more direction? Toby, do you think that's enough to, to know where we want to head? And do you think you can bring a resolution back that's still? And maybe, maybe the resolution doesn't need to be changed much? Or does it need to be changed based on the direction we're sort of adding here?
I'll check with City Attorney Rahala to see if some of the things that, essentially that the, the only significant change would have to do with apartment complexes and trying to help out people that are in multifamily housing. And see if the current resolution, which provides for staff to take administrative actions, is sufficient, or if there's something specific that council would have to do.
Yeah, council, we will have to come up with some amendments. We'll also have to make sure that the use of water funds for assistance to renters, that they're still in access to the water program. We want to make sure that we're not using water funds for something broader than the infrastructure itself.
Yeah, I mean, the, the purpose or the idea would be to be refunding what they, what we reasonably believe they're paying. So, you know, I would think if we do the math right, that should be defensible. I'm looking at Mr. LaFrance on that, but I hope.
Yeah, I think it's just making sure that the nexus is solid.
Yeah, and, and I will say, it may take a while to work out some of the administrative, assuming we can do this legally, what are the administrative components of doing a, essentially a, a grant program? um, based upon a utility bill amount for, um, for multifamily housing customers?
Yeah, I mean, I would, I'm not even sure I would consider it a grant because they ultimately are paying it. Um, so I, I think they just gotta think about it creatively.
Agreed.
I just, I wanted to echo what City Attorney Rahala said, and you know, the nexus is important. So, and I think if, and when investigating this, staff finds, uh, an administratively more favorable way to do it. I mean, I don't know how, it's been a while since I've lived in an apartment, but how you can identify whether, how it's incorporated into their bill or whatever, you may find in your investigation, um, you know, a way that works administratively. And, and I echo what you said, City Attorney Rahala about the nexus. That's important. So thanks for bringing that up.
So, and along those lines, Council, um, if it turns out that, um, from a nexus standpoint, um, this, uh, we're not able to use our utility funds, our enterprise funds that are in the utility bill, uh, would Council want to have a program that, I mean, that would essentially mean if we want to have a program like this, the only place we could take this from would be the city's general fund. Um, so, uh, would that be something that if, uh, so if we find out that we can't use our enterprise funds, that you'd want us to bring back, bring forward a program along those lines? And have a discussion about the potential impacts that that creates?
I, I would say no. I, I think the, if the program is designed right, there should be a clear nexus. So, I mean, the apartment complexes are not paying, they're all paying to get water and sewer. And none of the apartment complex owners, unless they're living in the apartment complex, are benefiting from them. It's the people that live in the apartments that are benefiting from them. So I, I don't even want to have a discussion personally. We can ask the rest of the council, but, uh, maybe thumbs ups, thumbs downs. Who would want to have a discussion about funding this differently?
Well, I, I'm most interested in getting the report back and seeing kind of where we are. So, you know, uh, Council Rahala brought up the issue about nexus. I'm interested in seeing where we go, you know, where that takes us and taking it from there. Um, and also seeing, you know, you may find as you're investigating it, Mr. LaFrance, a different approach, um, that will get us to where we want to get, which is let's see how we can be, you know, equitable in terms of benefiting those folks out there who happen to live in apartments that are under or unemployed and also struggling a bit. So I guess that's what I'm interested in, the, the report back and see how, how we, how we can make this work. So.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with the creativity, but I, I would not want to discuss funding it out of the general fund. Does anyone else want to discuss it potentially, funding it out of the general fund? If, I don't, okay. Council President Goodhouse says no. Tom says no.
No, not on its face. No. I mean, I'm, I'm hoping to get a report back that doesn't involve that. That's what I'll say.
Yeah, I mean, I, I won't say my statement again, but what I said before is factually true. So that would be my way of saying, figure out how to document the nexus properly.
Okay, so if, if I may, just to recap, uh, what we'll do is next week, they'll have, Council will have a resolution that will make the changes that are in the existing resolution, will further expand it, uh, to provide assistance to, um, customers that, um, like our single family residential customers are being impacted by COVID through underemployment or unemployment. And will provide them with a, um, with a benefit, uh, that would be essentially equal to the bill per unit of our, um, multifamily, um, customers.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any, any other questions or is that a good recap, Mr. LaFrance? Is that all you need?
That's clear.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. We will move on to item number four on the agenda, which is an update on the Resident Aid Fund of Tigard or Raft Program. Mr. Warren?
Good evening, Mayor Snyder and councilors. I'm Skylar Warren and the Department of Community Development. I'm a planner. And this first item I'm presenting on behalf of myself and Library Director Bernard, who is the co-manager of the Resident Aid Fund of Tigard with me. And I will. Okay, hopefully you can see that. Um, so, uh, just a quick run through on the background of this program. The Resident Aid Fund of Tigard was created in response to the COVID-19 public health emergency, uh, back in, uh, late April. And it's part of a suite of programs that were implemented by the council during that time, including the Tigard Aid Program, which you just discussed, uh, but also the Tigard Cares Program that provided business supports, uh, and a, an eviction moratorium. The Raft Program provided an allocation of a hundred thousand dollars from the city's emergency fund and established a pool of, uh, grant funding that, uh, was to be distributed to provide aid to Tigard residents, both housed and unhoused. And it was importantly intended to provide immediate relief. The structure of the program was that, uh, we wanted to work with area nonprofits, faith-based organizations and other agencies to implement this program because of course the city does not really have the infrastructure to be able to distribute aid directly to residents. Uh, it was a one-time funding provision, uh, at that time, uh, and was to be utilized within 60 days to ensure the aid, uh, went out quickly. And, uh, it was focused only on residents of Tigard. There were a number of program priorities. Uh, not, not all of these were covered, uh, by the eventual implementation of the grant. But this was a list of priorities that the city had, uh, available when applicants, uh, to the program, came to the city with proposal. So it included things like utility, rent and food assistance, internet access, important for families, uh, with children at home, having to do distance learning, benefits navigation, uh, filing for unemployment or other assistance, senior check-ins, medical transport. And on the side of unhoused, uh, residents, uh, we were looking at shelter services or vouchers for hotel stays, safe parking programs, again, food assistance, fuel assistance is an important one, uh, benefits, navigation, medical transport, childcare, and again, internet access. So the selection criteria that were developed by staff, uh, were intended to be fairly straightforward and easy for, uh, eligible organizations to, uh, make a proposal to meet the criteria. And one of the criteria was that, that the proposal addressed one of those program priority areas that we listed. Second was that the organization demonstrated an understanding of what the need was in the community at that time. And of course, um, there were a lot of unknowns, uh, in late April. And we knew that there was need, but we didn't necessarily know exactly where the greatest need was. We wanted to see that the organization had the capacity to disperse the aid efficiently and quickly. And we wanted to see that they had experience with the same program or similar programs in the past. All told, we had 14, uh, applications come in, uh, for funding. And out of those, six organizations were selected, including Community Partners for Affordable Housing, Immigrant and Refugee Community Organization, Just Compassion, Meals on Wheels, Packed with Pride and St. Vincent de Paul. And I'll go into a little bit more here about what specifically they, uh, each covered with their programs. So I want to give just, uh, this is really the, the, um, important part of this presentation because of course you're familiar with the program. Uh, I want to update you with what we heard back from the program participants. Um, you know, generally the funds, uh, began dispersment at the beginning of May and the program was largely concluded, uh, by the end of June. Uh, we've gotten back, uh, word from all of the organizations that the funds have been utilized, uh, that the aid was quickly dispersed and that the program had a measurable impact in the community. So I'm going to run through quickly, um, what each of the organizations received, what they, uh, what their program was aimed at and some of the, um, numbers, the metrics that they provided back to us, as well as some of the, uh, intangible impacts. And that's some of the stories that we heard back from the impact of the program. So Community Partners for Affordable Housing received $7,500 to provide resident budgeting services and rent assistance. Of course, uh, SEPA, as, uh, they're sometimes called, is an affordable housing provider. And, um, many of their residents, uh, are already, uh, uh, you know, living with, uh, not very much, um, savings to be able to weather impacts, economic impacts, like those, um, that resulted from the pandemic. So this program provided, uh, help to those residents in, in figuring out what their budgeting would look like moving forward uh, and to provide a little bit of aid to help them, uh, stay current on their rent. In all 30 residents of SEPA properties were assisted. This program actually, that the Raft Program helped to initiate, uh, a long planned program that, that SEPA had, um, basically thought about implementing. Uh, but th- this seed money actually helped them get it off the ground. And it actually led to a partnership with Work Systems, uh, which is an employment, uh, agency, uh, in the area. And SEPA reported the Raft Program to be, uh, very efficiently managed. Here's a story. A resident had been unemployed since the beginning of the quarantine. With the lack of income and a language barrier that makes accessing some resources more challenging, this resident struggled to pay rent each month since the beginning of quarantine. This resident worked with our resident services coordinator to gain access to culturally specific services around rental assistance. They also were able to engage in budgeting and will be working with Work Systems. So, uh, the next recipient was Immigrant and Refugee Community Organization. They received $7,500 to provide rent, food and utility assistance to the Pacific Islander American community. I learned through implementing this program actually that, um, as a percentage of population, Tigard actually has the largest Pacific Islander, uh, community in the state. Um, and even in raw numbers, we have a large Pacific Islander, uh, community. And certainly they have specific needs, cultural needs and, uh, language barriers. So ERCO was able to get assistance out to 20 different families. Um, also of note, uh, you know, at the time of the reports, uh, so end of July, um, beginning of August, at that time, the Pacific Islander community was the most impacted by COVID in terms of the, uh, numbers of, of the community as a percentage who, uh, had tested positive. And as I said, Tigard has the largest Pacific Islander community by percentage. So here are a couple of stories, uh, from ERCO. Uh, Raft Funds supported a two-parent household with nine children under age 19 and a 79-year-old grandmother living in the same house. The mother lost her caregiving job in late April and has been working part-time. Even though the father works labor in the construction industry, the family income has dropped since COVID-19. Raft Funds helped keep the family stable and reduce anxiety. In late July, mother found a private senior caregiver job and is now working steadily, but she wants to share her appreciation of receiving the financial support from the City of Tigard. Uh, Just Compassion, uh, which provides, uh, services to our unhoused residents, received $20,000. They, uh, used their funds to, uh, implement a number of small programs, including transportation and assistance. And with that, uh, with part of the funds, they were able to distribute 575 hop passes and 20 gas vouchers. Uh, they were able to, uh, install a protective outdoor covering that served 400 clients, provide hotel vouchers to 23 clients, benefits navigation to 19 clients, uh, staffing to support additional operational days. Uh, their showers, uh, indoor showers were completed, uh, through this program. Meals, they distributed 500 meals and 450, uh, items of personal protective equipment. During the time of this grant period, we had a guest that was living in her vehicle in our safe parking program and frequenting our resource center daily. This individual also has multiple health concerns and is a senior. As a result of this program boost, we were able to place this individual in a hotel for multiple days, which allowed her to feel much safer. During this time, she was approved for permanent housing, which he had been seeking for over eight months. Meals on Wheels received $20,000 from the Raft Program to provide food assistance for seniors. And during the program time, distributed 3,854 meals to seniors most vulnerable during this public health crisis. And a couple of reports back from the recipients of those meals. Your dedication to serving the community is nourishing our bodies and our souls. May all who donate their time, energy and care know how valuable their sacrifice is during this trying time. Meals on Wheels has blessed my home five days a week for so long. You have literally saved my life and I'm grateful beyond words. And St. Vincent de Paul received $25,000 for the program to provide rent and utility assistance. Rent assistance, uh, was provided to 39 families, which included 68 adults and 69 children for a total of 137 individuals. Utility assistance was provided to 10 families, which included 18 adults and nine children for a total of 27 individuals. It's worth noting as well that, uh, both ERCO and, um, SEPA were, um, uh, in contact with St. Vincent de Paul. And so if they had, uh, clients who did need rent assistance beyond what could be provided by those organizations, both SEPA and ERCO would help, uh, their client to navigate the St. Vincent de Paul Rent and Utility Assistance Program. One client was a single mom who was also a veteran. She has been out of work since March. She has never had to ask for help before and it was very difficult for her to ask us to provide rent assistance. She did have a portion of the money needed to pay her rent and we were able to fill the gap. She does not know what she will do next month when the rent is due and she is still not back at work. We also provided support for a Hispanic family that included two parents and three children, one a six-month-old baby. Both parents worked in the restaurant business at minimum wage jobs. They've been out of work since March. They've been able to pay their rent until this month. They, they did have part of the rent and we were able to fill the gap and pay the remaining portion. So, um, I, I think demonstrated by the reports back from the organizations, um, this, this program has had an impact in the community. But one of the questions that we asked, um, from each of the recipients was to help us understand where they projected need to be in the future. And we heard back some common themes, first around rent assistance. With SEPA reporting, one of the greatest needs we see amongst our Tigard residents is gaining rental assistance. Once the moratorium is lifted, many residents are going to have outstanding balances that are going to be hard to get out from under. St. Vincent de Paul reported the need and our community continues to be rent assistance. Also food assistance, uh, another read our, another need our resident services program has identified in Tigard is food insecurity. That's coming from Community Partners for Affordable Housing. Shelter assistance, uh, who reported that steps for the city to consider include a safe parking program for those living in their cars, safe, specific camping sites for the unhoused that would include sanitation and garbage facilities, maintain and build upon current services and provide a permanent overnight shelter in the area. Social supports were another theme that we heard, um, from Meals on Wheels. Uh, I believe one of the biggest issues all communities must address is social isolation and certainly for seniors that are having to shelter at home, uh, and may not be able to go out to stores to shop and are. uh, and may not be able to go out to stores to shop and are relying on Meals on Wheels for food delivery. Um, so, so, social isolation is certainly, um, going to be an issue. ERCO reported that COVID-nineteen public announcements in the following Pacific languages, Chukis, Marshallese, and Tongan are needed. And, um, with that, um, I'm going to leave the presentation and take questions on the program.
Those, uh, comments from the public and from the folks that we helped are both very heartwarming and also, I mean, there are things we need to see, but they're hard to, hard to see and know are going on in our community, but I think as a city council, it's imperative that we know, so. I appreciate those being shared. Who has questions or comments? Councilor Lube?
I mean, I would just say that, yes, this is incredibly important, and those comments really bring home the worry and concern that our residents have. And I can, you know, as you heard from the last thing, my house is also going through this circumstance, and it's tough. There are tough decisions, and it's scary not to know what you can pay for and what you can't. Um, this program clearly has made a huge impact on, um, people's lives that we have been able to help. So I guess my question would be, do we have any plans or any thoughts on seeing if we can do another round of assistance? I mean, I guess this is also a question to the council, seeing, um, how much help that we've done. But this is really helpful to get this information back and to know just how many people we've impacted. Um, but I'd be interested to see if there's a possibility of extending it.
This was general fund funded before, correct?
It was.
Uh, Council President Goodhouse, you wanted to comment or question?
Yes, uh, a great work of the program, and I thank you for those examples. Um, it'd probably be great for us to share those through social media if we haven't. Uh, my question was to this, um, you, you did some feedback with the ones that did receive the assistance, but I know there was many other organizations that didn't. It'd be interesting to, uh, also reach out to them and do a survey or can ask a similar question to see what needs they see, um, in case there's maybe some needs being met that those organizations aren't, so we kind of get a full picture of what, what else is out there. And I think if the council was to consider any additional ones, I know there was a lot of organizations that didn't get funding that are doing a lot of work in Tigard as well.
City Manager Wine, you had, you had something to share?
Um, Mr. Karen Council, just to respond to Councilor Lube's comment, one of the reasons we're bringing you these reports at this time is so that both when you are going into the Budget Committee meeting on October third and when you're considering the first quarter supplemental, it's coming up in a few weeks, I think, um, you can make a decision based on what you've heard about how programs are going so far, about the very question of whether an additional round of funding or funding for these needs should be continued.
Thank you.
Councilor Newton?
Yes, um, uh, first of all, Mr. Warren, thank you very much for the report. It was excellent, and I appreciate the good work. Um, it is heartwarming to see the difference we were ma- able to make in people's lives and, and, you know, a little bit discouraging to see the, the need out there, but I think it's important that we know that those needs are out there. Um, and, you know, I become particularly concerned about people's ability to continue to pay for housing. You know, that's, that's a concern. And I appreciate, um, City Managers, City Manager Wine's comment. I think it's really important that we're getting this information before our budget meeting on October third, because we're going to have a lot to consider. One thing I was going to ask about, did you get any feedback from Pack with Pride? Um, I didn't see their report there, and so did you get numbers from them or comments? That was the only thing I wondered about. Other than that, great work.
We are, are actually, uh, still awaiting their final report, but we wanted to make sure that the council had an opportunity to, to hear back, um, the reports from the other organizations prior to that, um, Budget Committee meeting on the third. We do know that the aid was all, uh, distributed from Pack with Pride, which is the foundation for Tigard Tuolotin Schools.
Thank you.
Youth Council Calderon?
Uh, yeah, just like every other counselor said, it's always great to see these messages and to know that we are truly helping people. Um, I will be at the October third budget meeting. I don't know how much I will be helpful, but I will be there as an observer and hopefully to learn more, and I would, I'm very excited to see if we can, uh, further provide assistance for these families. Oh, and thank you for your presentation.
That raises an interesting question. Uh, this can be a side note, but I think the City Manager, uh, Finance Director, and I should probably have a conversation about if there's any reason why you couldn't sit at the table, um, even if you're not voting, sit at the table as a sort of non-voting member of the Budget Committee. Seems reasonable to me, but that can be a side note. Okay, I guess everybody's shaking their head, so unless it's illegal, it sounds like that's going to be the plan. Councilor Anderson, did you, did you have, um, anything that you wanted to question or comments?
Very nice report. It's very nice to hear, um, feedback when we've, you know, that was kind of a stretch for us to, to give that hundred thousand dollars at that time, so it's very nice to hear. We've got a, maybe, maybe, uh, Finance Director can, um, check with Washington County. Um, you know, the Metro Affordable Housing Bond, the wraparound services, um, is gonna, that money is gonna kick in. It probably won't kick in probably till March or April, but, uh, you know, perhaps that, that's money that's coming to the same type of nonprofits.
So, Mr. Warren and/or City Manager Wine and/or, I guess, uh, Finance Director LaFrance, are we, i- is there a specific recommendation or proposal that's going to be coming to the Budget Committee to extend this, or is that part of the discussion you want to have tonight about whether we, we would like to see something like that? Or, uh, I guess I'm, given this, the feedback, it sounds like what we did was helpful, but probably not enough. And frankly, when the rent moratorium, uh, or the eviction moratorium's gone, uh, we're looking at a whole, a whole different scenario here. So, what is the staff request or recommendation on that?
So I think, um, based on the reports that we got back, Community Development would recommend, uh, some extension of the program, and, um, I think the, you know, conversation about what form that takes, uh, and what the amount is, is, you know, one for, for council to direct and for the Budget Committee to direct, but I think based on the, based on the reports that we got back from the participating organizations, it's clear that need has not diminished. Uh, if anything, it's grown, and, uh, the city has an opportunity to help fill some gaps, uh, that have been left, uh, with federal and state aid.
City Manager Wine, do you want to add, add to that, or is there, are you in, okay, or Mr. LaFrance, do you, uh, is, is some more of a suggested proposal or thought-through proposal going to come to the October third Budget Committee meeting?
We can bring you those specific recommendations. Go ahead. I'm sorry, Toby.
Nope, you, you were just saying exactly what I was going to say. I do anticipate that we will come with some recommendations. Um, additionally, we are, um, preparing to do a, um, special supplemental, so, City Manager Wine mentioned the first quarter supplemental. Uh, we are anticipating doing a special supplemental between the first and second quarter based upon any outcomes that come from the Budget Committee meeting on October third.
And I should probably clarify that, uh, both, uh, Library Director Bernard and myself are scheduled to present to the Budget Committee on the third, so, we will be coming with disinformation and perhaps program proposal.
Awesome. For an extension?
I believe so, correct.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from council and staff? Do you have the direction that you need?
I believe we do.
Okay. Awesome. Thank, thank you very much, and we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is to receive a briefing on the concept planning for River Terrace West and South. Mr. Warren, you're up again.
Good evening again, Mayor Snyder and councilors. I'm Skylar Warren in the Department of Community Development. Uh, I'm going to pivot over to, uh, an update on the progress in concept planning for River Terrace two-point-oh. Uh, River Terrace two-point-oh is, uh, and what we're calling a neighborhood for everyone, and, uh, I'll elaborate on that a little bit more in this presentation. To orient you to where exactly we are talking about, the River Terrace two-point-oh Concept Plan is going to cover two areas, River Terrace West and River Terrace South. Each borders on the current River Terrace area, and they are the last two urban reserves, uh, in Tigard. Between them are some undesignedated, uh, lands, as well as the city's, uh, parks property, the Lassitch Lane property, and they're bordered by rural reserves. And of course, uh, rural and urban reserves were designated by Metro in a process, uh, several years back as being lands that would be designated for those particular purposes. So a little bit of history on the planning in this area, and I'll breeze through this really quick. The West Bowl Mountain Concept Plan was actually, uh, a plan that was, uh, led and adopted by Washington County back in two thousand and ten, and it took a preliminary look at areas that include both, uh, River Terrace, uh, and River Terrace two-point-oh. Uh, it was completed prior to the Urban and Rural Reserves Program that I just mentioned, as well as the changes to the UGB expansion process that, uh, Metro has implemented in the last cycle. This was followed by the River Terrace Community Plan. This plan was led by the city of Tigard, and it provided a detailed community plan for, uh, the River Terrace areas. This plan was completed after the lands had been brought into the urban growth boundary. And then, once those lands, uh, were brought in and, uh, they were annexed, that started the process of planned developments. And that started, uh, in about two thousand and fifteen, and then it's been going since. Uh, the plan development process is led by a private developer who comes in with a, a proposal for a detailed plan for development of specific sub-areas, uh, in the River Terrace area. Some are complete, um, others are, uh, have approval but are still waiting development, and some areas have not yet, uh, had any, uh, plan development completed for them. And the, uh, plan developments that have been completed are shown on this map, outlined in purple and with the, the slashed lines through them. So the question is, why now? Why would we undertake the planning process for, uh, River Terrace two-point-oh now? Uh, it is a council goal to ensure Tigard grows and develops in a smart and equitable manner. And, uh, it also is an, it's an important thing to undertake right now because of concurrent work that's, uh, going on in adjacent communities. Most importantly, King City, uh, which with its King City West expansion will be urbanizing the area directly south of River Terrace South, uh, right across, uh, Beef Bin Road. And so, um, it's important that we are planning for infrastructure improvements there uh, prior to development that happens in King City, because a lot of the infrastructure lines will be carried across that River Terrace South area. We also have an opportunity to bring this concept plan into concordance with other concurrent planning work. Uh, and most importantly, the transportation system plan for the city of Tigard, which is just now getting underway. Uh, Clean Water Services has two different projects. One is their basin plan, and, and one, uh, relates to, um, stormwater. And then the Washington County Urban Reserves Transportation Study, which you're going to get a briefing on, uh, following this presentation. And importantly, um, this is an opportunity to begin to do concept planning that's in line with Tigard's housing initiatives. And it's going to build on and be informed by work that the city has already completed through its Housing Options Code amendments, uh, which were adopted in two thousand and eighteen, the Affordable Housing Plan, which was adopted in two thousand and nineteen, uh, State House Bill two thousand and one, two thousand and three, which were, uh, passed and signed into law in two thousand and nineteen. Uh, the city's Strategic Plan Update, which is still in progress, but, but will be in effect prior to the completion of this plan. Tigard, Tigard's Equity Initiatives, which, uh, have really gained steam over the last year. And Executive Order twenty-dash-oh-four, which was Governor Brown's, uh, Executive Order on Greenhouse Gas Emission Reduction issued in March, I believe, of two thousand and twenty. We're looking at this project through two major lenses. One being equitable opportunity, and the other being climate change impacts. So we want to make sure that when we're building, when we're planning for a neighborhood, that we're planning for a neighborhood where there is, uh, equitable opportunity for housing and, uh, to make a livable community for people with, uh, a range of housing needs, different housing types, different housing sizes, and different housing price points. And we also want to be looking at climate gen- in, climate change impacts. That's important. One, because, uh, we want to reduce climate change impacts as much as possible, but it's also important that we understand that, uh, mitigating climate change impacts also has an equi- an equity, uh, component to it. Because we know from, uh, studies that have been released in the last several years that while, uh, climate change impacts are borne by everyone, we do know that there's a disproportionate impact on communities of color and other marginalized communities, and we want to make sure that when we're addressing equitable opportunity, we're also making sure that we're mitigating, uh, climate change impacts for those communities. So this project, um, of course, any concept planning project is going to be looking at a variety of things, uh, from housing needs and infrastructure needs and park needs, transportation needs, um, and so there's a lot of moving parts, and so we have a lot of project goals around this, uh, concept plan. We want to identify a diverse mix of housing types, as I mentioned before. We want to make sure that we're implementing a transparent and inclusive process. We want to create an efficient in- infrastructure strategy that saves the city money. We want to make sure that our transportation network, uh, is multimodal. We want to identify important natural resources. We want to assess the best mix of uses, so, uh, housing, commercial uses, other, uh, residential supportive uses. We want to make sure that we plan to help reduce greenhouse gas emissions. We want to develop an implementation plan that's realistic and achievable, and we want to achieve the above objectives with a creative and innovative approach. So, this is one of the early, uh, pieces of, um, work that was done by our housing team, and it's kind of framing how they're looking at, uh, the housing, uh, piece. They want to identify not just the variety of houses, but they want to look at how those hu- housing types begin to fit together within the context and build a, a cohesive neighborhood that has variety. Uh, imagine that, you know, you're just starting out buying your starter home. You're able to buy a house, uh, in a neighborhood that's small and affordable. Uh, as your family grows, perhaps you move into a larger house. Uh, as your, as your nest empties, uh, and you're looking to downsize, you move into another smaller house in the same neighborhood. So we're really looking at, how do we achieve those housing housing-for-all-stages-of-life goals that we had in the Housing Options Project. There's a number of contextual considerations that are going to shape this plan, including that interface between the urban and rural reserves, the existing development in River Terrace and in some of the other areas in unincorporated Washington County, the wildlife refuge and that city park property that I mentioned, the South Cooper Mountain Development just north across Shoals Ferry in Beaverton, the King City West Community Plan that's being developed concurrently, as well as, I should mention, their transportation system plan, which is also being developed concurrently, that Clean Water Services Basin Plan that I mentioned, and the Washington County Urban Reserves Transportation Study. So the process of this work is that, you know, we started off with funding in 2019 that came from Metro 2040 Planning and Development Grant for $300,000, along with a contract with Metropolitan Land Group to cover the balance of the city's costs related to concept planning effort. In April, we released a request for proposals. We received four proposals back and eventually moved forward with a contract with OTAC. We're now at the stage shown at the top there, the analysis and plan development. Once that's done, we'll move into local consideration of the concept plan and adoption. Planning Commission will, of course, review that first and make a recommendation to council, and then council will adopt the plan or decline to adopt the plan. And then, from there, it goes to Metro for consideration and adoption. And they don't necessarily adopt the concept plan itself, but they do approve the proposal to expand the urban growth boundary. And from there, we will undertake community planning efforts to refine that concept plan and and further develop the the community plan. Once that's adopted, we would move on to annexation, which is primarily voluntary, and it's based on opportunity, and then on to private development through the plan development process that we mentioned earlier. So that's kind of a large overview of it. Here's a project timeline of where we are. We, the preliminary analyses, as I mentioned, are being undertaken right now, and we anticipate having the preliminary analyses complete by the end of September. We're going to follow that with a housing charrette, which is going to look at housing typology plan into the concept plan, along with all of the other infrastructure concepts and and transportation concepts. And then we're going to develop a number of concept plan alternatives. Those alternatives will go through a selection process and will determine a preferred alternative in December. And then that preferred alternative will continue to be refined until we have final analyses, and as I mentioned, we have consideration by Planning Commission, Council, and Metro. So some other work that's being done aside in more detail, what kind of analysis work is being done right now? Environmental analysis work, so we have sent letters to all property owners in the urban reserves requesting access to the properties so that the city's consultant can perform the required work that they need to do, and we sent postage-paid return postcards. And the team has begun work. They are actually intending to complete that preliminary work within the next week. We got back about, I would say, forty to forty-five percent of the property owners did grant access. The others either did not respond or did not grant access. We're undertaking that preliminary transportation and infrastructure analysis and a housing needs analysis. We're also forming a community advisory committee to guide this work. So the applications for that committee closed on September 11th. That was last Friday. That committee is open to all, both residents and non-residents. We are focusing on diversity and equitable opportunity on that committee, and it will meet virtually in six meetings over eight months. Here's an overview of the community engagement plan that we have for this work. Obviously, we kicked off in summer. We have that Community Advisory Committee scheduled, not for mid-September. It's actually been pushed back a couple of weeks to the beginning of October so that we could make sure that we actually got the equitable representation that we wanted to see on that committee. The online open house will happen sometime later in the fall. The first online open house. We'll have a second Community Advisory Committee meeting in November, followed by another public open house. Community Advisory Committee Number Three will happen in January, and another Community Advisory Committee meeting in February, followed by a final and open house. And then the final Community Advisory Committee meeting to review the draft concept plan. So with that, I will end the presentation and switch over here to be able to take questions.
Youth Councilor Call, the room, any questions?
No, but I would like to say thank you guys so much for making sure that it's very climate equitable and that it's affordable housing. Both those issues will be big issues for my generation, and I know that affordable housing will be something I'm facing in probably like ten or fifteen years when I have to move out. So thank you.
Wow, fifteen years. I'll let your parents know about your plans. Counselor Newton, questions? Or comments?
Okay, there I go. Sorry. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warren, for that report. I do have, I I'm glad to see that we're looking at multimodal transportation. You know, that area is sort of removed from any sort of current, you know, public transportation service. And my concern as we develop this moving forward, if I live out there and I don't have a car and I'm relying on public transportation to get to my job or to services, you know, I I know you're going to look at that, but that's a concern, and also where services would be. So, you know, if if I don't have any kind of, you know, if I don't have any kind of vehicle, you know, I can walk or ride a bike to a certain degree, but there there isn't a ready transportation system there, and also there's not a plethora of services out there for folks. So moving forward, I think if we want to make it truly an equitable community, you know, we need to think about that. I am happy to see, you know, I'm really excited about our affordable housing plan and glad to see that we look at our our planning through that lens, and the climate change is important as well, but I would be concerned about people who might want to live out there that don't don't have options, they don't have vehicles, and they need to rely on transportation, the public transit to get around, so.
Counselor Lou?
No, I I appreciate the lens that we're looking through in order for the planning and also the big picture of what we can have around it, so people aren't using their cars as much and have ability to get around with other forms of transportation. So taking the big picture is important, but thank you for the update. It was really helpful.
Council President Goodhouse?
Yes, thank you for the update. The thing I think that's really good right now is that all these communities are working on this area at the same time, so we can kind of work together on how to get transportation that way, work on whether we work with TRIMET or to get everyone out there. And I definitely like the idea of the mixed use. When we have a blank slate like that out there, it's a great opportunity to really to make these communities walkable. Look at the walk scores. Make it a community where someone can go and they can go to a park, they can go get their haircut, they can go get groceries and all those things. So and I think talking to some of the developers out there, they I think they're looking forward to looking some of those mixed use and trying to get something where people can have a lot of the services close by. That's more more marketable for them, but also works for all the everything you outlined as well. So I'm glad we're looking at that and have the opportunity to look at everything and see what we can do with the other cities around us to kind of pull together and work on the transportation part, especially King City, but all the other cities kind of be on the same page at the same time.
Counselor Anderson?
This is a very interesting plan. I have, in my years, never seen a community advisory committee for a large development like this. So I'm interested to see what they're going to come up with. And I think the, obviously, you have the Technical Advisory Committee as well. I I think it's going to be just a more interesting area after it's all done. You look across the corner to Beaverton's little corner, and it looks just all multifamily apartments, so this has an opportunity to be more interesting. You talked about varied price points as well, so I'm just interested to see how it plays out. Pretty ambitious, because you've got a pretty tight timeline before May, so. But we'll see. It's it's on track so far.
Mr. Warren, I was going to ask about that too on the timeline question. It does seem aggressive, but are you are you is the project team staying on track mostly? Timeline-wise?
We are, we are on track timeline-wise. We, both myself and the consultant project manager have confidence that we're going to deliver concept plan on time as scheduled, and so you know, it it takes a little bit more coordination with the various members of the team, because obviously, when you're doing a concept plan, there's a a lot of moving parts. So it just takes a little bit more oversight to make sure that all those pieces are falling into place and that we're following the critical path.
Well, thank you for the briefing. Do you do you need any other either direction or feedback tonight, or have you accomplished what you were hoping to with this agenda item?
I think, yes, I've accomplished what we wanted to do, which was to keep you all informed about this project. Certainly, this is not the only briefing you're going to hear. We're going to continue to keep you informed. I apologize that the presentation tonight does not have a lot of pretty images. We're not in that stage of the concept plan yet, but of course, in the future, we'll
We'll forgive you.
Yeah. In the future, we'll have not lots of nice maps and graphics to look at. And I would just end my response by thanking Counselor Newton for the comment about transit. We we have been in contact with TRIMET to discuss with them what it would take to get transit supportive development out here, and it's, you know, it's a bit of a chicken and the egg situation, but they basically have told us that, you know, if you if you build it, we will come, and so we feel confident that with what we're looking at here, we will get to the numbers that would support TRIMET ridership to be able to eventually get a line extended out there, which will be important for addressing the the factors that that you listed.
Thank you very much. We will move on to item number six on the agenda, which is to receive a briefing on Urban Reserves Transportation Study from Washington County staff, and I think Mr. Roth from our staff.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Looks quite dark here. There we go. My name is Dave Roth, and I am Tigard's Senior Transportation Planner, and I'm here to largely introduce Aaron Wardell, who's a principal planner at Washington County, who's going to be giving you a briefing on the Urban Reserves Transportation Study. And I think you heard the acronym or the study name just now from Skylar, so the ERTS study is closely or has a close relationship with Skylar's concept planning work out in River Terrace South and West. Both Skylar and myself have been participating as members of the Technical Advisory Group for the ERTS study. And along the way, we've provided some comments back to Washington County and the the consultant team who's working on the project, and just to give you a quick, high-level flavor of the comments that we've provided back. We've suggested that the the project broadened its scope to consider more travel options out there, and I think you just heard Skylar touch on that. You know, we're we're interested in seeing closer integration with development and and transit options, for example. The next comment is regarding the relationship between the ERTS study and the concept planning work that we'll be undertaking out in this area, and and it's sort of a I guess this is a chicken or egg question as well. So, you know, these these projects are happening on similar timelines, and they're looking at at some related questions, and I think it remains to be seen how those questions are answered depending on which project you're you're thinking about. The third comment is related to the roadway network or the the future roadway network out in the area, and we've provided some feedback related to how a roadway connection might connect in with the future proposed tile flat extension and the relationship between that and the Lasich property that Tigard owns, which is outside of the urban reserves area. We've also asked some questions around some of the proposed realignments of Beef Ben Road and the impacts of that between developable parcels, the the future concept area in general that Skylar is going to be studying, and then also related to King City's Town Center planning that they'll be doing. And then the final comment is just around funding assumptions. I think there's still some remaining questions around how the projects proposed in the ERTS study are funded. So that's my my quick intro, and I think I'll just hand it over to Aaron Wardell from Washington County, who will who will take you through a presentation here.
Aaron, good to see you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Aaron Wardell. I'm the Principal Transportation Planner for Washington County. We have been sharing this presentation with our jurisdictional partners. So far, we've presented to City of Tuolatin. We're scheduled to go to Beaverton next month, and we presented it to the Board of County Commissioners as well. I am going to be sharing my screen, so let me open that up. Okay, are the slides working?
Yes.
Okay. So let me start this presentation by talking a little bit about what urban reserves are. I understand many of you are probably familiar with them, but in case you're not, or we have others listening in, let me give some quick definitions. The urban reserves are identified as land that is possible to add to the urban growth boundary within about the next forty to fifty years. It's the area designated as blue on this map. We also have areas designated as rural no reserve. Those are kind of the peachy brown color. Those areas are designated around the metro area to be possibly added to the urban growth boundary once most of the urban reserves have already been added. So the urban reserves have been used up. We can theoretically start looking at the undesigned areas. And then finally, in the pale green color are what we call the rural reserves. The rural reserves are not eligible to be added to the urban growth boundary. Now, on this map, you'll notice the hatched areas. Those are for areas that Metro approved to add to the urban growth boundary in 2018. Those areas are still being contested, but we expect that they will be officially added to the urban growth boundary sometime fairly soon, and those are in the cities of Hillsborough, Beaverton, King City, and Wilsonville. I just jumped too many slides. There we go. So a little bit of background on this study and why we're doing it. A few years ago, Washington County completed our Transportation Future Study, which was an opportunity to look at our fifty-year horizon of development and growth in Washington County. One of the things we identified through that study was the amount of growth potential we have in these urban reserve areas and what that could possibly mean for our transportation network. We also have learned quite a bit in the areas that have been brought into the urban growth boundary recently, including current River Terrace, and we wanted the opportunity to apply those lessons learned to areas that will come into the urban growth boundary in the future. So the specific questions we wanted to ask as a part of this project were how will this future development impact our roadway network? What type of additional multi- What type of additional multimodal capacity do we need to be considering? And how can the county help the cities to move forward with their concept planning? And how can we help the cities coordinate with each other and with other agencies such as Trimet and Clean Water Services where applicable? So we applied for and received a Metro 2040 Planning and Development Grant to do this work. We've been working on it for about a year and a half and we expect it to be done by the end of this year. So a little bit more about our objectives. We really are looking at this as an opportunity to facilitate the concept planning and then the comprehensive planning that cities are expected to do. There's been an extensive amount of coordination with our partners on the assumptions, our project goals, our evaluation criteria, and the performance measures that we use. We have been identifying areas of projected multimodal capacity needs. We've been assessing how much right of way we may need for future transportation projects, funding needs in those areas. And then one of the other outcomes of the project will be creating an infrastructure funding template, which we can provide to the cities and give them that information so that there's a unified finance plan template used by all cities in Washington County as they go into concept and comprehensive planning. So as I said, we kicked off the project in late May of 2019 and will be finishing up the bulk of the technical work by the end of this year. Would you expect that the county will make some amendments to our transportation system plan related to this work possibly next year, maybe the year after, depending on workloads? And you can see by the gold arrow, we are largely complete with the technical work. We've gone through developing partnerships and outreach, assessing growth impacts and system needs. We've evaluated potential improvements and now we are working on that infrastructure finance plan piece. We did form a technical advisory committee for this work and we conducted a large amount of outreach for it. Our project technical advisory committee included Clean Water Services, Trimet, Metro ODOT, and city staff, including Dave and Skyler. For our outreach, we focused on city and county community groups. So we visited county community participation organizations and city neighborhood organizations as requested by the cities. We've also done targeted stakeholder outreach and that includes meeting with property owners who are in some of these urban reserve and undesignated areas. So with the technical work that we've completed on this project, the slide walks through some of those bullet points. We developed land use assumptions for each reserve and we worked closely with our city partners to do that because again, these areas will be planned by the cities, not by the county. We conducted travel demand modeling to assess what our needs will be in the future. We looked in detail at engineering feasibility analysis of a few specific projects that had been identified as being particularly challenging and we wanted to get more detailed cost estimates for them. And then we prepared a draft planned project list for each of the reserve areas. And this draft project list will be reviewed by jurisdictional staff before it goes into the final report. On the land use assumptions, I think this is pretty interesting work actually. Metro, when they do their buildable land inventory and they make the decision of whether or not to expand the urban growth boundary, makes some assumptions about what can be developed within the urban reserve areas. And the assumptions that Metro makes are essentially for dwelling units, about 10 units per acre. They don't do this in much detail. They're using kind of a broad brush for these larger areas. So this was an opportunity for us to dig into that number a little bit and see how realistic it was. And one of the findings from talking to the cities of Washington County were that the dwelling units forecast is probably pretty accurate. 10 units per acre doesn't seem like a lot, but these areas are really challenging to develop. As you've seen with River Terrace and River Terrace 2.0, these areas tend to have steep slopes. They have a lot of wetlands and other natural resources. And so they're possibly not going to be well suited for a uniform, high-density residential look. That may be appropriate in some small areas, but not across the entire area. And on the employment side, Metro's assumptions really didn't assume very much employment at all. And so I think Metro's estimate was 4,000 employees for all of these reserve areas. Through working with the cities, we adjusted that number up to 13,000. And that really reflects a lot of the themes you heard from Skyler's presentation just now, which is that the cities are looking at jobs housing balance. The cities are thinking about climate change. They're thinking about building complete communities. And so they want to plan for both housing and employment in these areas going forward. So these were the assumptions that we used as a part of our study. Our travel demand modeling used those assumptions. We identified future transportation needs, both in roadway and multimodal needs. We specifically looked at 24 intersections that had been either identified through previous studies or identified through our travel to model, travel demand modeling as having some sort of capacity constraints or potential challenges. But it's important to note that while we identified these locations as having particular challenges and something to look at, we did not identify what the specific mitigations will be. That's something that the cities will do through their concept and comprehensive planning. And the county did not want to dictate what the solution needs to be. Rather, we wanted to present it as something that the city should consider in more detail. And this map shows where these study intersections were. As you can see, they are spread throughout Washington County, throughout the reserve areas, and some of them are in the rural area. Because of Washington County's unique shape of the urban area as a crescent, we end up with a lot of additional traffic on our rural roads, particularly as these urban reserve areas start to develop. For the detailed engineering feasibility analysis that I mentioned, these were the projects that we had our engineering consultants refine alignments and develop detailed cost estimates for. On this project list of particular interest Tigard would be the intersection of Beef Bend Road at Roy Rogers Road. I think that this was mentioned in the previous briefing as well as being something that we wanted to look at and talk about with both King City and Tigard, as both of the cities will be developing land on the north and south side of Beef Bend Road. And there are some challenges on the west side with the park property as well as with the National Wildlife Refuge that's over there. So it's a challenging area and it's something that we wanted the opportunity to study a little bit more closely. And this map shows where those projects for engineering feasibility were. They're a little bit spread out around the area. And again, these were projects who are identified as being particularly challenging that we wanted a little bit more engineering, preliminary engineering work conducted for. So our work in progress, again, as we headed to the home stretch of this project are to finish the infrastructure analysis report. This will identify potential solutions to be refined by concept and comprehensive planning conducted by the cities to identify potential TSP amendments. And then the Infrastructure Finance Plan Toolkit and Template, which will contain methods to estimate revenues and to address the costs as well as funding tools. And we're seeing this as a resource that can be really helpful to the cities as they go forward. One of our findings, and this isn't a surprise to anyone, but infrastructure is very expensive and it's getting more expensive. And so having a toolkit of funding opportunities, we think will be particularly useful as the cities are dealing with that and balancing needs and thinking about what projects need to be done most and when they need to be done. So the last two slides I have are two specific transportation projects that the county is looking at adding to our transportation system plan. Both of these projects are in either undesignated or urban reserve and undesignated areas. Washington County doesn't have the funding or necessarily the political will to go forward and build these projects now. Rather, we would like to add them to our transportation system plan so that we are preserving the right of way for the point in the future when these areas are added to the urban growth boundary or when it's determined that this project is now a priority for the region and we'll go forward and build it. So the first one of these is the Cornelius Pass Road Extension and this is south of the South Hillsborough Planning Area. This project was identified by Hillsborough through their concept planning. It runs through undesignated property. It is generally along the same alignment that Willamette Water Supply Program is looking at putting a pipeline. So co-locating a road on top of a pipeline is a really good opportunity and something that we would like to think about going forward. And then the second project is of course of much more interest Tigard. This is the Tile Flat Road Extension that Dave had mentioned. We are looking at this as a potential refinement area if we don't add alignment to the transportation system plan. This is a really challenging project. We expect that with the urban reserve area coming into the urban growth boundary after Tigard requests that to happen and the concept planning going forward, we will spend more time identifying the specific alignment. Based on the shape of that blue urban reserve area, locating this road is a little bit like threading a needle. It's just really hard to do. There's a lot of topography. There's a lot of wetlands. And so this is something that we'll be spending some time thinking about. Certainly we need to have that network connectivity through that urban reserve area. And then we're additionally challenged by the fact that there is undesignated immediately south of Tile Flat Road and then in between Bull Mountain and Beef Bend Road. So it requires a little bit of additional work in order for us to draw the line on the map. There's more challenges with Tigard's future park property on the west side of Roy Rogers Road and again, the wildlife refuge down there. So this is a really challenging project and difficult to locate, but also really important to preserve some right of way for network connectivity in that area. And this project was originally identified by the South Cooper Mountain Planning Effort. It provides a parallel route to Roy Rogers Road and it performs very well in travel demand modeling, meaning it's seen as a very important network connection. But again, not without its challenges. And those are all the slides I have for you this evening.
Well, thank you, Aaron. I do want to, if you could go back one slide, I just want to make sure that the entire Tigard Council is really paying attention to this. Council President Goodhouse and I both sit on a working group with our staff and we've been briefed on this multiple times. But Aaron, I guess what I would like to, not only do I want to make sure the Tigard Council is paying attention to this and integrating what our senior transportation planners' comments were, I also want to make sure that you are aware that both Council President Goodhouse and I have been being briefed. And it is imperative to us that the feedback that we're providing through our staff is getting included and having an impact on the future design of this, of, of the Tile Flat Road Extension. To say that we're concerned about it would be an understatement. And, and, and so I just want to ask and make sure that the Washington County staff know that both the mayor and our council president are both sitting and, and giving our staff the, the direction around this. And it's critical that it, that it be taken into account and, and the project meets our needs. So sorry, I'll, I'll be quiet about that now, but what counselors have questions or comments? Council President Goodhouse, anything?
No, I just echo with you exactly what you just said.
Counselor Anderson?
Uh, no comments. Just happy to see the presentation. It's, again, since we're, since we're working so closely with King City on this, I, you know, it's very important to, to have this, the urban reserves planned out ahead of time. So just thank you for the presentation.
Counselor Newton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. When I read the report and looked at the, looked at the PowerPoint, I, I really concur with our senior transportation planners' comments. I think, I'm not sure, but I think I might share the similar concerns that you and Council President Goodhouse have about this project. So without going into great detail, I do have some current concerns. I'm always a little nervous when we get these big swaths that end up on a road that, you know, sort of, you know, underperforms as it is. And so I guess without going on, I would, I share your concerns and I, and I would like to make sure that those are being passed forward. And I appreciate the staff and council president and the mayor's work on this. So yeah, I share your concerns.
Thank you, Counselor Newton. And as our only counselor who's been a planner formally, we'll take those even more seriously. Counselor Lou?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation and just to echo the comments that have already been said. I think the alignment of the road is important to us and just making sure that it's done in a smart way and that we're being listened to is important. So thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just one more thing. I, I always am concerned when, you know, I'm concerned about the, I, I call it the downstream, which isn't maybe the best technical term, but when these swaths just end on one end or another, that always really concerns me. So I know there's more work to be done, but I have a lot of concerns about the impacts on that, on that area to the east on Beef Bend Road, so.
Counselor Anderson, have you gotten to go? On this topic? Sorry.
Yes, you've, you've got me already.
Sorry. My screen is not in its normal arrangement right now, so. Youth Counsel Calderon, any questions or comments?
Uh, no comments, but thank you for the great presentation.
All right. Aaron, thank you very much. Mr. Roth, do you have anything else you wanted to say on this tonight?
No, no additional comments. You know, between Washington County and City of Tigard staff, you know, we will continue participating in the, the process and we're happy to bring forward more information as needed going forward.
Yeah, we certainly look forward to continuing to work with Tigard staff and electeds on this and we'll certainly have quite a bit more technical work conducted before we bring this last project as a proposed amendment to our transportation system plan. So more conversations will be had.
Thank you, Aaron. Okay, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is to receive a briefing on the Tigard Transportation System Plan Update Project. Mr. Roth?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Dave Roth, Senior Transportation Planner, again, before you're here. Let me forgive or beg forgiveness here. I lost folder and file access. I'm going to ask Carol or Carolyn to help me with the presentation. It's like we've got it going. All right. So this is the, the first briefing that staff are providing on the Transportation System Plan Update Project in front of City Council. And we, go ahead to the next slide, please. So we recently kicked off the project internally and after a, a selection process where we've assembled a team and the team is being led by Fair and Peers. And then we also have Alta Planning and Design, JLA Public Involvement, and Angelo Planning Group on, on board as well. Next slide. All right. So just a little bit of context around the Transportation System Plan. It's a set of policies, programs, and projects that address the multimodal transportation needs within Tigard's urban growth boundary over the planning horizon. The current Transportation System Plan, TSP 2035, as it was called, was adopted in 2011 and provided planning guidance through the 2035 horizon. We'll be doing a, an update that's consistent with the Regional Transportation Plan, looking out to 2045. The TSP serves as the transportation element of Tigard's comprehensive plan, so you can anticipate the Chapter 12 of the comp plan being updated with the new transportation plan goals and policies. It meets Oregon's statewide planning goal number 12 around transportation to create a transportation system that takes into account all relevant modes. Next slide. So what are the, the individual elements of this particular update? So TSPs have to follow certain, certain rules for the state of Oregon and so we're operating within that framework. We'll be conducting robust community engagement. We've got a technical advisory committee as well as a community advisory committee and we're in the process of recruiting members for the community advisory committee. We'll have to, of course, like any project that's being conducted during COVID, we will be using considerable online and virtual resources and, and hopefully maybe toward the middle or end of this project, we'll be able to conduct some in-person engagement activities if we can. The first big piece of this project is taking a look at the- activities, if we can. The first big piece of this project is taking a look at the goals and policies of our current Transportation System Plan. If you look at the TSP now, we have thirty-something goals and policies covering virtually every aspect of our transportation system. And one of our first steps with the update project is to take a look at those goals and policies and figure out if, with, with community input and, and input from elected officials, key stakeholders, whether or not those goals and policies are all still relevant for us today. We've, we've had a lot of change in the last decade since the TSP was adopted, and, and a lot of change recently that I think is top of mind for people when we're thinking about our, our transportation network and, and what direction we wanna go. So, getting those goals and policies updated early on will be really important. We'll use those goals and policies in that process early on to help us develop an evaluation framework that will be looking at projects and programs to prioritize for implementation. And then also, I made a point here to, to call out what's in our toolbox. So, we have more tools that we can consider for the transportation system, particularly around multimodal needs and better integration with land use. And I think some of the, the projects we've gotten updates about tonight fit right in with that, that concept. The next, the next piece is developing the existing conditions and needs for the, the project. That'll be a, a big piece with community engagement, where we're going out and soliciting feedback of where there are problem areas, where people like to see improvements across the city. We'll be taking a look at future system projections. This is sort of an interesting topic area right now. There's a lot, there are a lot of unknowns right now because of the impact of COVID on our transportation system network. So, we're, we're seeking guidance from, from our consultant team, from agency partners on, on how to do traffic projections that will be of value for this project when things are a little off skewed today. The next piece, then, is funding strategies. So, we'll need to figure out how we're gonna pay for these proposed projects and programs, what different funding sources do we have today, what's the outlook, is there any need for a future different funding source? And then, the, the next step here is prioritizing projects and programs. And I mentioned the prioritization framework early on. We'll use that to help set those projects and programs that will be financially constrained, that will be built within a certain time period, and make their way onto the capital improvement plan down the road. And then finally, documentation and adoption of the plan. Next slide. So, here's the project schedule. I know it's kinda hard to read here, but we've just kicked off, and we're actively working on finalizing our communications and engagement plan. And one of the, one of the first key activities is this red square in September, which is gonna be a Goals and Priaries Workshop, which will gather staff from across functions of the city to help us get that conversation started, and then that will proliferate the rest of the project, as we're going out to the community to have that same type of conversation. The overall project schedule here started in mid-August, and it will run to the end of October, if we can stay on track. And, next slide. Uh, so, thinking about the, the local project context, so I already mentioned the TSP 2035. Thinking about some of the policy and plan areas that have come in front of the city over the last year, couple of years. First off is the Complete Streets Policy, and this is, this was adopted by City Council a little over a year ago. And just as a refresher, the Complete Streets Policy is really, has its foundations in supporting an equitable transportation system, one that works for all of the community members regardless of their age or ability. And that will be foundational to the TSP. Likewise, the Strategic Plan Refresh, which is happening right now, has more detailed transportation focus that is, is setting up nicely to lead into some good conversations with the TSP as we get into it. And then, some of the projects that you heard about tonight, the Ertz Project with Washington County, the concept planning work for River Terrace South and West, also the Washington Square Regional Center Plan that's happening right now. I believe you've also had a briefing on that recently. Tigard Triangle Work. And we've also come to you on the Seventy Second Avenue Corridor Design. That will factor into the project. Safe routes to school, making sure our kids can get to and from school safely without necessarily relying on being driven by their parents. And then finally, the City Center Future, City Center Futures, and thinking about what the future of downtown Tigard or Tigard's Town Center looks like. Next slide. And then, thinking more broadly, regional and state context, of course, we know well that the Southwest Corridor project has progressed, and it has significant transportation and land use impacts in Tigard. So the TSP will have to contemplate those, and, and we'll know whether that project is moving forward soon, and, and we'll be able to integrate that good work into our TSP. Metro T 2020, same, same thing there. Regional Mobility Policy, this is something I hope to bring forward perhaps in the next council briefing. Thinking about how we measure performance of our roadway system. I think everybody who drives or can, or gets around the city or the region by car knows what a congested roadway feels like, and the mobility policy at the regional level and at the, the local level plays into that, that feeling, and how we make decisions about where we invest our, our transportation dollars to address congestion and mobility. The Regional Transportation System Management and Operations Plan, this gets to, I think, the, the best example of this is how our, our signals are connected or not connected, and basically integrating smarter technology solutions into our, our transportation system. Washington County Plans, you heard a little bit about Ertz tonight, that'll factor into our work. And then finally, I believe Skylar mentioned it in his presentation, there's been some recent work at the state level to enact the Governor's Executive Order around greenhouse gas reductions and transportation planning rule changes. And those, those bodies of work will definitely factor into our Transportation System Plan as they're happening concurrently. And we, we simply cannot ignore the greenhouse gas relationship to our transportation system anymore. All right, next slide. So, Engagement, already mentioned, well, we're recruiting members for our Community Advisory Committee, and we're working with our consultant to reach out to groups such as the Tigard Tualton School District, our Youth Advisory Council, Central Cultural. We're looking for ped bike representation, transit representation, and likely affordable housing representation, since that's a significant topic of interest locally. Our Technical Advisory Committee will be made up of city staff and then partner agencies, both at the county, regional, and state level. And then I mentioned engagement activities, heavy on the virtual open houses, which has benefits, also some drawbacks, but we'll be managing through those. We'll be having some online surveys, potentially using story maps. And one of the, the recent ideas we're exploring is to have some pre-recorded staff consultant or stakeholder interview sessions where we pick a topic, for example, the regional mobility policy work, and have a session that will be educational about the topic, and then take feedback from people that can be incorporated into the work. Next slide. And I believe this is my final slide, and I just want to reemphasize the importance of equity in leading our work around all of our planning efforts, and for me in particular, our transportation planning efforts. You know, a big question for me and for this project, I think, to answer is, are our transportation goals and policies and our project investments leading us to a more equitable and inclusive community? It's a big question that I'm hoping we can start to answer with this project. And, you know, are we leaving anyone behind? During the work on the Complete Streets Policy, we, we found that somewhere around twenty percent of our population doesn't drive a car for some reason or another, because they, they, they can't, or they choose not to. And are we making investments that support that slice of the population? And I'll, I'll comment on the map that you see before you. I believe that some of you have seen this before. This is some really great work that our GIS team has been taking on to develop a transportation equity index for the City of Tigard. And essentially, in a nutshell, what you're seeing is these darker purple census tract areas are areas that, based on this index, have a higher transportation need based off of equity for the community. So this is a tool that we will be using to help prioritize projects and investments as, as we get into the project. Next slide. And that's all I have for my presentation, so I'll open it up for any questions or discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. Counselor Lube, any questions or comments?
No, just a really interesting presentation to hear all of the updates and, and the lenses in which you're looking through things. So, thank you very much for all the information.
Youth Counselor Calderon?
No question or comments, but it's always great to hear that we're getting more transportation in the city.
Counselor Anderson?
Well, I, I worked on the 2035 TSP on the planning commission, so I can't believe it's been ten years. So, the planning commission is gonna be busy, and quite a lot of new technology since then, so I'm looking forward to it.
Counselor Newton?
Uh, yeah, thank you for the presentation. I, I really appreciated your last slide where you talked about the importance of equity and not leaving anyone behind. That's really important as we move forward. And also, I'm sympathetic to you trying to do projections during COVID. So, that, that's gonna be an interesting, interesting situation, I think. But anyway, thanks for the, for the good information.
Council President Goodhouse?
Thank you for the thorough report. You always do a great job, and, and we're in great hands with you.
I would add one comment to the COVID-19 sort of comment that Counselor Newton made, and that is that, yes, hard to model. And I also wonder what, and, Mr. Roth, I'm sure you guys are thinking about this, but what does the new normal look like? Because the new normal probably doesn't look like the old normal. So not only is there a modeling problem of what's, what's going on now, but what behavior is no longer gonna continue? Because I guarantee you that some of the organizations that are spending millions of dollars on large buildings have figured out that maybe they don't need to spend those millions of dollars, and that they may have a workforce that's happier and more productive at home. So I, I, I just wonder, like, I assume that's part of the, part of the calculus, too?
Yeah, you know, what is, what is the new normal? I, I was reading an article on Medium today that was, that a former colleague and a, a board member of the Lane Transit District down in Eugene wrote, and I think the gist of the article was that we're gonna be, we're gonna be trying to figure out what this new normal is for a while. So, I think I'd respond and, and say, we, we can still do some really good work, and I think the way that we've allocated resources on this project, we're gonna be able to accomplish, accomplish some things that we've, we've really needed to, to do for some time. And so, that's work around better defining our active transportation network. You know, how do people get around walking, cycling, accessing transit in this community? So I think we'll, we'll focus some more resources towards that. And, you know, we'll, you know, over the next year, while we're working on this project, I think we're gonna learn a lot, and, you know, we'll, you know, we'll have to see, see what comes. But, like I said in the presentation, we're getting some good guidance from ODOT and our, our partners on, on how to do this. But I think everybody's struggling with the same, same question.
I'm, I'm definitely no expert, but I, I know what I would, like, the way I would approach a problem like that possibly would, in my line of regular work, would be to be looking at it from like a sensitivity analysis perspective, and, you know, looking at a high, medium, low type of scenarios for some of those, so that you, you know, you may not know whether it's gonna be on a certain metric, whether it's gonna be high, medium, or low coming out of COVID five years from now, but maybe, maybe you have the answer to all three of those, so that, you know, you can just apply whichever one ends up being reality, just as a way to think about some things. I don't know if that's helpful.
Yeah, that, that's good advice and guidance. And I, I think the consultant team that we have with Fair and Peers has some, some good experience in doing scenario planning. And yeah, as you mentioned, there's a lot of variables that go into this, and we can, we can test some of those things out with this project. Good advice.
Any other comments or follow-up? All right. Thank you, Mr. Roth. We have known non-agenda items. Manager Wine, do you have an administrative report?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor and Council. I have a very brief administrative report tonight for you. I have four items, just notes for you to know about. First, Public Safety Advisory Board. As of today, we've received twenty applications, and they're from a diverse group of individuals. So, most of them have answered all the questions, and the application's closed tomorrow. So we're continuing to promote this opportunity through tomorrow, and then the caucus and selection process proceeds from there. So, we're looking forward to the advisory board process moving forward. Anti-Racism Action Plan, just an update, you just heard Dave Roth talk a little bit about questions of equity related to the TSP, and more broadly, we're moving forward with the Anti-Racism Action Plan. Last week, this week, and next week, the leadership team has continued to update one another about departmental progress on elements of the Anti-Racism Action Plan and its implementation. So, you've heard about changes to purchasing, contracting, recruiting, finding a trainer to help us, and also communicating and educating the community. So, you're receiving all of that real time also in your communications with the community. So, we're gonna be hoping to share more with you in a few weeks about our progress on that plan. COVID-19, we still are, we still have a pandemic on. Washington County and our cities are not considering any moves to Phase Two at this time. The percent of positive cases in, in metro counties continues to trend up. We haven't seen the Labor Day bump, but, and testing and evacuation because of wildfires is causing challenges and reasons to pause on that front. Wildfires and air quality, we are continuing to receive daily updates from Washington County and Tualton Valley Fire and Rescue about their EOC responses, although Washington County is gonna be closing out its EOC response today. So, we're heartened by the management of the wildfire on that end of things. That's going well in our area. Air quality is the main event, something you all know. And the air quality advisory through Thursday of this week is looking about the same as Air quality is the main event, something you all know, um, and the air quality advisory through Thursday of this week is looking about the same as it's been. Um, I've been trying to keep you up to date along with our workforce. We've elected to close city operations except for emergencies and essential staff um, through tomorrow, and we're evaluating day by day, as long as the air quality index and air quality is hovering in the hazardous realm. Um, I wanna give a shout-out to our facility staff who continue with everybody who works in Tigard to try to stay in front of our facility needs when it's almost impossible to provide healthy air quality anywhere, inside or outside. So, and of course, we've closed down work activity um, outdoors when, anytime that index goes over the unhealthy uh, ra- uh, zone. So, let's see, I've also tried to keep you up to date about our water supplies, which are secure, and providers are asking that due to increased demand that it's important to reduce unnecessary water use, um, that's especially true in Clackamas County, so that more is available for fire suppression. Let's see, and then finally, just a note about communications, and I think you probably are noticing that um, these are challenging times to be communicating. I wanted to give a shout-out to our communications and our, our Public Information Officer team. Because of the dual challenges of COVID and wildfires, communications is even more important and it's complicated, so we're emphasizing that outdoors is a safe environment when you're talking about COVID, but right now, going outside doesn't help us at all with wildfires and needing to stay indoors and the severity of smoke, so, and we're discouraging travel and asking people to stay local, and at the same time, watching our communities and towns being evacuated um, quickly. So, I just wanna say thank you to our communication staff who are adapting quickly as they always do, um, and that's all I have for administrative report. I'm always open for questions if you have them.
City Manager Wine, on that point, um, the recognition for the communications team and the PIO, and then we had one earlier in the meeting, um, could we, like, send a formal thank you on behalf of the council to both of those groups?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely. So, we actually use a program called Kudos, and when the council wants to uh, name and recognize our staff for their efforts, um, we can use that system, and I will put that in motion tomorrow, and I'll make sure that you know what that looks like.
Thank you. All right, any other questions or comments to the city manager? On her administrative report? Okay.
No, I, I was just gonna make the same comment, um, and I appreciate you suggesting kudos to the staff. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You bet. All right, we do not have an executive session. Uh, Carolyn, do you think your microphone's working any better, or do you want me to you want me to take the roll call vote? Once we have a motion?
I should be able to do that just fine.
Oh, you, oh, you're much better, okay. Uh, is there a motion for adjournment?
I move to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Uh, City Recorder, please conduct a roll call vote.
Mayor Snyder?
Yes.
Council President Goodhouse?
Yes, yes.
Counselor Newton?
Yes.
Counselor Lou?
Yes.
And Counselor Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, we are adjourned. Good night, everybody.
Night. Thank you, good night.
Bye.